Well, folks, it's six o'clock. And it is the second Tuesday in July, Tuesday, July 8th, and I am calling the meeting of the regular meeting of the Common Council to order here in the council chambers in Platteville. Collette will start with roll call.
Tony McFall?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Kathy Cobb?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Yeah.
Lynn Parrott?
And Lynn Parrott called me. She's excused. She may be here late.
Okay.
Uh, the first item on our agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. If you want separate discussion, please let us know. Council minutes from June 24th, the regular meeting, payment of bills, the financial report for June, appointments to boards and commissions, and tonight I'm appointing Lex Libertor to the Public Housing Authority. Licenses, one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol. Permits, we have a banner permit from September 20th to October 5th for the UW Platteville Homecoming Parade on Saturday, October 4th. We have the UW parade permits. We had a banner permit. Now we have the parade permit for the same parade on Saturday, October 4th. Run Walk Ben's Hope for the 11th Annual Ben's Hope Run Walk on Saturday, September 20th from 9:00 to noon. A street closing, this is Irving Place, this is right behind the auto shop on Main Street next to City Park on Saturday, August 23rd. From 8 until 5 for the 6th Annual Chuck and Cheese Fest. And then we have the election cost sharing agreement with Grant County. Do I hear?
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Collette will vote.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yeah.
Cap?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I have nobody who's red- registered under city citizens comments, observations, and petitions. But at this time, I would like to thank all the city staff members that and council members that participated in our three-day deep dive.
Maintenance and conditions tours that we took with departments.
Maintenance and I call it a deep dive. We saw things we didn't know we could see. Yeah, which was very interesting. So, thank you to all of you for pairing and showing us those things. And thank you to the council members who were able to attend. Gives us great perspective. Okay, anybody else with any comments? Do we have a, by the way, do we have a pancake breakfast coming up at the airport, Nicola? See if I can find that date. I don't have it off the top of my head, but. Sorry that I don't have that medium in front of me.
I want to make some comments on the department progress report.
All right, when we get there. Additionally, thank you to the Fourth of July Fireworks Committee for another great event and to the Mining and Rallo Jameson Museum for a great heritage day. It was a great day. So Nicola, did I give you enough time to find the pancake breakfast?
All right, yes. So I'm just wanting to make sure that I have the right year. Sometimes you pull that up and it's a long year. Uh, still double checking. It says that July the 27th. But I want to make sure that's 2025. It is on a Sunday, yes.
It is on a Sunday. So it would be then July 27. Okay. Uh, let us go on then to unless anybody else has anything else. Okay. Reports that were in your packet. Boards Commission Committee Minutes, Police and Fire Commission, Kathy. I have nothing on the Housing Authority Board, although we continue to seek a new executive director. Museum Board, Tom?
Nothing to add.
Other reports that were in the packet, the Water and Sewer Financial Report for June, the Airport Financial Report for June, any questions on the financial reports for the Water and Sewer or Airport? Then the last item on the reports are Department Progress Reports, and Ken, you indicated you had some questions or kind of comments.
Okay, I'm trying to find the pages. What page should you go to? Try go, uh, mine aren't numbered. Uh, try going to page 148.
Are your pages numbered down here at the bottom? There's the Department Progress Reports.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Department Progress Report, Administration Department. Well, um, as I look at these, um, is there a way to state more about what you're working on? For example, under Finance Division, Cash Management and Transfers. Um, unless I go down there and start talking to people, that doesn't mean too much to me.
Would you like me to?
So.
Give you some more information?
So how can we make things clearer? And you, you got two, four words you put there. Is there, could you add some more word to this and make it clear? As he goes through this?
I can maybe speak on behalf of all the staff on this. We can add whatever level of detail that the council would like on it. Um, but that's an exchange of how much information do you folks want a digestion reading versus the idea and how much staff time that you would like directors to dedicate into the reporting. Um, it is kind of put us here in a sample of this is kind of what we're doing and then being able to use this forum like we have here today to further dive if you have questions. And then you're also, of course, invited to when the reports come out to contact myself and staff if you'd like more information on these bullets as well.
So we have the Finance Division, then we have the Clerk Division. Some, some of this I understand and some I I don't understand. So the same thing.
We'd be glad to elaborate on any of the items. For example, the cash management and transfers is uh, the management of the city's cash. In other words, on a daily basis, the, the, uh, treasurer, um, which is Jeff, monitors our bank accounts and our cash levels and makes sure that he plans for the, the bills that are being paid and the payroll coming out and then money coming in. We, we try to maintain below 500,000 in our checking account and move money in and out um, on a regular basis to our investment accounts. So that's what that references, the cash management. Um, if there's any items on the Clerk Division list, um, you know, if you'd like to let us know which ones they are, uh, Collette or myself will, will elaborate for you.
And there's, um, there's another one that says Administration Director. Items there. Then they go to section, it's major objectives for the coming month. Clerk Division, same thing. So I'll move on to the City Manager.
Go ahead, sir. I'm ready.
City Manager Progress Report, June 2025. So for example, Family Aquatic Center, attended the Splash Capital Campaign. Now, I've been, uh, at home quite a bit and so you've been going to this and so should I be talking to you to see what is going on?
Participated in the kickoff meeting. Uh, the Splash Committee is going to be the, the fundraising component of the, uh, the, the structure. It's my understanding now they've also completed, most of the members have completed training through ICI. That meeting was on Monday. Uh, I forget what Monday it was last month, but that was their public kickoff campaign in which they also, um, not only informed the public on what the project's going to be about, but then they also solicited for additional help from citizen members, community members that want to be active in helping fundraise it all as well.
There's, um, another one here, attended webinar on collective bargaining as provided by Von Briesen Law.
Yep.
So where did this come up? Why is this?
As we have collective bargaining with our police, uh, division, so.
So you had a meeting on collective bargaining?
Well, it was an education session, probably. A webinar on an education session.
We have a retainer with Von Briesen Law. They help us with employment law if we need them. Um, and they also then for their clients, they offer like it's monthly, uh, legal opportunities where it's an hour, hour and a half where you can uh, log on and hear, uh, usually a panel of lawyers talk about the different elements. This one was in regards to, to the specifics of collective bargaining. And so it kind of just, uh, went through a run through on, uh, good ideas to prepare. We know that we're still probably have a year out from that process, maybe 10 months out is our collective bargaining agreement was a three-year, uh, deal, but it was a good opportunity for administration, uh, myself, Doug, Chad Wilson, our HR manager to to review that and kind of get our, our thoughts in, in line so that we have a successful negotiations next year.
So then in relation to that, and how many people of the council went to this meeting?
Think anyone from the council.
It was a staff meeting.
That morning.
It was, it was offered out and myself and I believe uh, Doug and I think maybe one of the lieutenants was there and Chad was on. It was all logging on online and, uh, you listen to them have their presentation and panel discussion on the different, different topics of collective bargaining.
There's one here, Human Resources Manager's Death. Agreement was made with PD, CD, and PW to merge responsibilities of Code Enforcement Inspector and Community Service Officer. Again, is this a staff meeting and and, uh, council members? Were not a part of it.
Correct.
Question is, what I'm trying to find is how much will I learn and did you learn? As far as passing on to council individual? Okay.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions on the Department Progress Report? Specific questions. Kathy?
Just, um, page 178, 2025. 178, I gotta get there. Okay. Where it says in the first column, UWP 2024.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
And then but it appears fourth already from June.
December. I think that.
Or is that title supposed to be 25?
Yes, that's, uh, that's an error on my part. That should be UWP 2025. Those are, those are current numbers through May, um, based on our current uh, contract. Um, the bus does not run during the summer months, only during UWP academic session.
Hey, anybody else with a question on?
I have one. Building permits, 2025. So what? I have a, I have a print copy. It's eight pages now. How can we get to these? They're, they're not labeled at all as far as page number. Is that labeled some other way that?
Uh, it's labeled, I have a page number.
What's it in?
What, I mean, because of the way I received the information.
They're eight pages.
Right. So there's a lot of building permits.
Yes, so.
And so what's your question about them?
Well, the question is, eight pages are pretty fine print.
That's right.
Since we have eight pages, you, and there's so much paper used up here, why don't you make it ten, twelve pages so we can read this stuff better instead of using the magnifying glass to read it?
I'm sure that if you would like a bigger, uh, uh, well, actually, I don't think it would fit on a bigger page. I mean, frankly, it wouldn't fit. Any other questions?
Okay, Fire Department, I think that was fine. Okay, here's the library.
We have no one here from the library tonight.
Well, that's the. There's, um, library, it says attempted to repair the first floor women's restroom toilet. Well, that sounds fine, but who's, who's doing the work and why isn't a plumber hired to, to repair the toilet? Or is this a attempt by some staff member to repair the toilet?
Well, it said Facilities Manager Shannon worked on the following projects in April. Perhaps they called Shannon and I didn't ask about the first floor women's bathroom, restroom, but sometimes if a, a toilet just keeps running, you might just call Shannon and say, can you help me out here? And if Shannon says, well, that it's going to take a plumber, it's, I, that's beyond my, my. But I think, uh, I think probably the first, uh, the first call goes to an in, um, a, a city the, the facilities manager, and then he makes an assessment.
So then, so we don't know if he did anything about it. And there's another one here. There's a they looked at the library's leaking window and damaged rooftop insulation. Well, then the next line says the window leaked. The Buick glass has skipped over here on Tuesday. You repair the window. Well, I assume that all runs together, even though it doesn't seem to make sense as far as continuity. Hilltop rooftop damage. So things don't seem to run together very well as far as. How are they written? I'm, I'm used to seeing things, frankly, in my opinion, written much better because I, I, I served, uh, 17 months in, in Personnel for a US Army, and so we had to be precise. Got to be accurate, whatever word you want to use. He just didn't mess around.
So Ken, I encourage you, if you, when you get these Department Progress Reports, and you've probably had the packet since last week, to take a look and to make a phone call, uh, to Clint or to the department and ask for clarification. Do I have anybody else on the council has questions? Otherwise, we're moving into the action portion of our agenda.
Take another.
Okay.
Police Department have a question, uh, or police, I suppose I could call them up. Western Wisconsin Tech. Where is the Western Wisconsin Tech?
Up at Sparta.
Sparta?
Yes.
Did you say Sparta?
I.
Okay. And that turned out here trying. Public Works, Howard. Uh, the only question out of Public Works was on lead service lines, LSL. It says there was only one property that was disconnected or failure to remove an LSL or get under contract with a plumber for replacement.
That is correct.
What does that mean? These other properties that still have LSL are not under contract, but were previously disconnected for non-payment. So just describe what this one means. I, I know about LSL, but what does this mean in this situation?
And what? What that means is that some properties were previously disconnected due to non-payment, okay? And so there, I, I'd have to look it up five or six that, uh, that still have lead service lines, but they were previously disconnected. And there was only one that was a paid up customer with an LSL that did not arrange for a plumber to replace the LSL in time. So we implemented the ordinance and disconnected that, that one property.
Okay.
Okay, like I said, I think, uh, we're probably to the end of those, so let's go to the action portion of our agenda, Ken.
I want to make one more comment. Last week, I, I rode the shuttle bus. Bus and I really enjoyed it because I had no way to get to my meeting. And so I thought it was a good experience and appreciated it.
Did you ride the shuttle bus or the taxi?
Well, which one do you want to, which one is it?
I don't know. You tell me.
Shuttle bus, ta- ta- which, when would you call it? Taxi? And you put, they put down a ramp and they get you in with your equipment and so forth. Which one is it?
It must have been the taxi because the shuttle bus stopped operating in, in May.
Okay, so it's a shuttle bus?
No, it would have been the taxi.
All right.
It would have been the taxi.
Taxi, okay, thank you.
Okay, let us move on to action items in our agenda. The first is the Pine Street Pedestrian Islands. Howard?
Thank you. Um, temporarily excavating has started, uh, the repairs, uh, from Oak Street to Chestnut Street. We have the three pedestrian islands. Um, one is by Oak Street, another one is by Third Street, and the last one is by Bonson Street. They were placed there uh, where there's no left turn due to one-way streets or no corresponding street in Third Street. Um, they were there to provide protection from, for pedestrians from vehicles. They could look left, cross to the center, look right to make crossing into parts. The one that gets the most use is the one at Oak Street. It's used extensively by, uh, residents of Ruxton and other places in the downtown to cross to McGregor Plaza. The other two get, uh, sporadic use. Um, due to the water main break, the island at Third Street was damaged with concrete sections tilted. Uh, the one at Bonson Street was undamaged. We do not know right now whether there is damage to the Oak Street Island. Uh, once we conclude the excavation, we will, we will know that for certain. The biggest, uh, pros for keeping the islands and repairing the damaged one at Third Street are the safety, traffic calming, and, uh, if landscape, the beautification of the street. Some of the cons are that, uh, because of the constrictions to traffic and plowing, plus the cost of maintaining the plantings in a high-salt environment. The snow plows we have, uh, use the front-mounted blade and side wing. Uh, due to the constriction, the plows have to be physically restrained so that they can pass between the island and the curb. And that would, uh, it would allow us to, uh, do things a little more efficiently. Parks Department is responsible for snow clearing of sidewalks uh, inside the island. It can be dangerous to clear the snow trying to push it across all the traffic lanes. Uh, they've tried to purchase plantings for the islands. Um, and this year they installed River Rock instead of plantings. Uh, at the previous meeting, there was a question whether there could be a compromise to keep the islands, but narrow them to allow for the unconstrained plows.
Or keep them at 12 feet.
True.
Okay.
Um, um, currently, the islands are 12 feet wide. Um, the bare minimum by ADA requirements is six feet wide. We've looked at it with staff and the desired is eight to 10 feet. If we narrowed to eight feet, adding two feet on each side for the plows, Street Department believes this would be enough to get those unconstrained plows through. Uh, on June 25th, the Safe Routes Committee made two motions. Uh, and I have the draft minutes in there. And their motion, their first motion was that this project must include maintaining the three existing 12-foot wide pedestrian islands, basically as is. And then there was a second motion, should it, to, and should include an investigation of additional uh, pedestrian bicycle safety measures. Um, and they say that it could be either rolled into the project or, uh, positioned so that it could be done in the future. Um, so what I have is I passed along three different options as far as the, the costs go. Option one, uh, removing all the, all three islands and replaced with flat concrete and sidewalks. That was included in the base bid of the, of the contract. The act, the costs in the bid are just under $13,000. Um, extras per the Safe Routes Committee are, are shown at the bottom. Um, one being, uh, painting for a crosswalk at Court Street. Option two, uh, 12-foot islands. Uh, Third Street would have to be removed. Oak Street may or may not need to be removed depending on, um, what needs to happen. Um, in this option, the Bonson Street Island, we would not do anything to. We would leave it just the way it is, so there would be no cost involved. As you can see, there's, uh, engineering costs and then removals and concrete and all like that. So the grand total for doing this would be a little, be 18,550. But since option one was included in the bid, the additional cost is just under $5,600. Option three would replace all of them with the eight-foot islands. Third Street has to be removed anyways, and the biggest difference is that this one would include removing Bonson Street because if you have two eight-footers and then one 12-footer, it doesn't, it doesn't help the plows. Um, so the, the total for this one uh, is 26,225 or the additional cost of a little over $13,000 to go with eight-foot islands. And um, so, um, we're looking for guidance. The Safe Routes Committee, uh, recommended keeping them at the 12 feet wide.
Well, that seems to be the, the least expensive option.
The least.
I mean, I, it's disappointing to me that they were taken out without the council ever being advised that they were being taken out, especially when I know that people have been hit crossing the road. The council ever being advised that they were being taken out, especially when I know that people have been hit crossing the road. Also, to me, it's not an option not to have the islands.
I guess I disagree a little bit. It doesn't seem like the one up at Bonson gets used. Bank. Well, the bank is Third Street, isn't it?
Bank is Third Street.
Yeah, the one at Bonson, I don't think really gets used much. The one that's up at the top of the hill.
And it's by the post office.
Correct. Yeah, it rarely gets used and the bank. I've seen multiple people come out of the bank and never use it. That one, they just cross mid-block. It seems like if there is a snowstorm and it takes an hour to disassemble the blade and then another hour to put it back on. That's a lot of not. Not doing s- street work during a time when it needs to be done. And even if the eight-foot one were put back by the bank as a calming measure, even if it doesn't. Isn't used, if that were there as a calming measure, the one down on Oak Street were eight feet. And I had talked to Howard about possibly shortening some of the, taking some sidewalk away. And that's not doable because of the ADA ramp. But I I have looked online and there are places where there are signs on the island. Yield to pedestrian signs, some of them are just signs, some are electronic signs. And you could have a sign right there on both sides of that island at Oak Street, yield to pedestrians. But. Another thing I was curious about, like up by campus on. Oh, Hickory Street by the Oldsvik Center, there's a crosswalk with.
Blinks all the time.
Blinks all the time. Okay, maybe it's defective, I don't know, but there are push buttons on it. There are buttons on both sides of the street where people activate it. On Main Street, on West Main by Center, which is straight across from the Center for the Arts. There's another one that has the activation buttons. And I didn't know if on Oak Street they could have that where you could activate it and, you know.
Isn't that, wasn't that with the, isn't that the rectangular rapid flashing beacon thing?
Well, there are those, but I don't think they all have, do they all, all of those have the activation buttons?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's the extra that's on the bottom of the paper.
Okay, is it possible to put a yield to pedestrian sign on the island itself?
Yes.
And. I guess I would be more in favor of having the eight-foot islands with the signage. Having the one up by the post office that's never used. And that would be. That way. And it wouldn't slow down the snow removal.
Make a motion.
That's, okay, I'll make a motion to. I mean, can I make a motion? Because it seemed like the other things were what the motion was.
No, you could make a motion. If you want to make a motion that we have two eight-foot island.
Or three, I mean, it doesn't matter.
Street, the Third Street, I mean, you could make them.
I mean, I think we could get goodbye with the. That's what I'm adding for discussion. I don't know if discussion's over, if there's more that people want to say.
Response to that, Bob. I agree with most of that. The, we did hear at our last meeting that. Sorry, take the median out near the post office. The request is to put a painted crosswalk there somewhere. From the bank or to the post office across from whatever that street is, Court Street. Is that Court?
Yes.
Yeah.
Court Street.
So that would be a consideration with that as well. Tim, okay.
Eight-foot island, but yeah, I I think. Painted crosswalk. That wouldn't add much expense.
One hundred and sixty dollars.
Eight hundred and some thousand dollar project.
I know. No, I stand. No, it doesn't add a lot. I agree.
May I have your attention?
Just a minute, Tom is speaking.
With the situation with the Safe Routes Committee. We're very concerned about traffic speed. Very concerned also making sure that there was enough space. With the twelve-foot islands compared to an eight-foot island. For handicap accessible. Because there are a number of people especially use the supermarket, Piggly Wiggly. And those. Rest are those restaurants and and other facilities, stores there. I think we are looking at, Safe Routes is looking to make sure that we could keep. It's safe for all pedestrians and that. It came down to the point where we thought, does it, is it make a difference? If we. Decide to shorten them. Or keep them the same and the Safe Routes would rather keep them the same. That's now. Safe Routes Committee, I have to say, did. Probably what I would think would be an extensive look at the whole situation. And I have to agree with them that even though it does take up time. For the plows to switch. What, what value do we put on efficiency compared to safety? That is the concern that I think the Safe Routes Committee had. And so. I just. I want to thank the Safe Routes Committee. Because they do a lot in their investigations of what. Was asked. And I think we should take. The public's interest. Because the Safe Routes Committee is a means for us to know what public input is. And. I just really am very strong in favor of what the self-right. Yeah, Safe Routes Committee is. Voicing. So. It doesn't, I'm not being discouraging, I'm just saying. That we have committees in the community that give us advice to the city council. And sometimes. We ask for those people to give us advice. And I think we need to take that in consideration. Because I fully believe that we cannot govern. Without having the public's interest and their input. And to take that highly in consideration when we make a decision.
Thanks, Tom. I appreciate what you're saying. Oh, I'm sorry, Ken.
Ken.
I appreciate what you said and you had a special meeting. June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, Safe Routes was there and. Our information is presented in red and I agree that we need to be continuing with this as far as with. Safety at the utmost. And so I believe that just because we have snow a few times during the winter. That we should be so concerned and it'll cost us too much money to move our plows a little bit. Because of the snow. It only snows a little bit. Here in Wisconsin. So that doesn't, it doesn't make sense to take these things all out. I I agree they should be included.
Tony, do you have any questions, comments?
Trying to think it through, honestly. I think if the public wants the twelve feet, maybe we should just do the twelve feet, but at the same time, like the extra hours. Difficult. I wish there was a way to have like maybe one plow that would just do Pine Street, but I know that's probably not logistic. And I'm trying to think it through.
I'm, I want to make a comment about the Safe Routes Committee itself. Because they're a committee, it's the assumption and maybe it's the way it's written that they make recommendations to the council.
Yes.
But their motion must. Maintain or keep them or. Anyway, must stay. And so when I read that, it was a question of must mean. The recommendation to do that or must per some ADA or D O T.
Recommendation.
Rule. But it's a recommendation, so. As with any committee, I totally agree, we need their input. But when things come to the com. Balance that with. The resources we have and. I'm concerned about the, the, the time. And because basically it's inefficient and to have to change the blades on the snowplow. And I, I realize that. We have winter, but we do quite often have quite a bit of snow. And the public is going to expect that snow removed now. There, I don't, I'm not sure that the general public would be. As totally supportive if they knew that it was taking. Public work staff time to have to change equipment to plow that one street. It'd be different if there were multiple places around the city, but it's for one street. So. I'm, I'm totally supportive of the fact that we need. But I, I agree with Bob's initial comment about the eight feet. I mean, eight feet is, you can use a wheelchair, you can push a. Ever and it seems like it, it's still exceeds ADA requirements. Of, could be even shorter. Bowing the eight foot would allow two feet more and.
I may make one last question.
Sure.
Or comment. Tom, I appreciate what you were saying. I, I didn't. I wasn't trying to minimize. Not, not be cognizant of safety. I also looked at taking a snowplow off the street when it's necessary as a safety issue too, to maintain that. My que- a question I had was when you said eight feet would not allow, you know, ADA compliance. And the room for the ramp, does there have to be a ramp in a pedestrian island? Because isn't there an opening where you just?
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't think.
I, I don't understand how it wouldn't be ADA compliant.
Did I say it was, wouldn't be?
I must have misunderstood.
Because I didn't say it wouldn't be ADA compliant.
Okay, I misunderstood.
But.
So, so it's wide enough, I mean, I've seen people get caught in the island. At Oak Street. So it's wide enough if I'm on a wheelchair. That I can be in the island at eight feet. And cars can pass. I don't have part of my wheel sticking into the lane nor my feet. And if I have somebody pushing my wheelchair, they can stand behind me. Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, I think that they provide traffic calming. I think they're essential for. Safety, particularly at Oak Street. I think any suggestion that. A person who's handicapped could walk down to the signal and cross the street and then walk back up. To the, to the supermarket is probably. Yeah, the most insensitive thing I've heard. So. Does someone have a motion or what are we doing here?
To motion forward. I don't have a problem with it.
Well, I guess I moved to direct staff to remove and replace all three pedestrian islands with eight-foot wide islands and painted crosswalks. And painted crosswalk at the Court and Pine intersection. Sated, but I would also like to amend that and have signs on the island at Oak Street.
Oh, you would, you, you would like to add that there should be signs.
Additional signage on that, so it's in the middle of the road.
Second step.
Okay, so we have a motion that all the islands on Pine Street will be. Re- reconstructed or added or, and they'll be there at eight feet wide. Additionally, there'll be a painted crosswalk at Court Street. And additionally, in the Oak Street Island, there will be signage, only in the Oak Street one. Bob, that says yield to pedestrians. Okay, only in the Oak Street. Okay, we have a motion by Bob and a second by Kathy. Collette will vote.
McFall.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Tom, I do thank you for bringing up the Safe Routes Committee and it is important that. And I do know that they do take their job very seriously. And I believe that this is. We're preserving the island, which is the most important thing here in terms of safety and traffic calming. All right, let's move on to availability for strategic planning. Clint.
Madam President, staff has requested the common council approve the dates and times to engage with, in preliminary strategic planning sessions. The purpose of these sessions is to review the city's mission statement, core values, to affirm unified vision for the common council and identify operational priorities. Policy priorities and strategic objectives that will guide the city's work over the coming years. The intended audience for these sessions includes common council members with facilitation support provided by staff from the Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. City Department Directors and key staff will also participate to inform and support discussions on potential initiatives. These meetings will be conducted in a work session format. In polling out to our council members, and if you see on the diagram right there. Based on the submitted availabilities, the best potential dates for these three sessions appears to be July twenty-fifth. Twenty twenty-five from nine AM to eleven AM as the first session. August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, six PM to eight PM as the second session. And then the third session falling on August twenty-ninth, nine AM to eleven AM. Now, at the time of this polling, though, there was concerns that have come up about the Labor Day weekend, which falls on that following. The August twenty-ninth date, which has called the question as possibly an alternative towards September fifth. Tonight, looking for discussion and calendar matching to finally pin these dates down. On when we can conduct these three preliminary meetings to kind of get actions rolling on strategic planning. Madam President.
Okay, you see the times and dates. I'm the one that raised the fact that August twenty-ninth is part of Labor Day weekend. It says I'm available, but I can tell you I'm not. I don't know how that got a, a why, because I'm, that. Labor Day is the first of September this year, which is a very unusual thing to happen. People don't even, in fact, I just had somebody try to schedule an appointment. For a, I had to remind him it was Labor Day. So I had suggested that instead of the twenty-ninth, we look to the next week after Labor Day.
That be dairy days.
Uh, that could be dairy days. We would be in town. It would be, yeah, dairy days, but if, if it's nine to 11 in the morning, is that a consideration? On the fifth. You're at Cream Puff University? All right. I don't even want to know this.
It's part of dairy days.
So how about the fourth, Thursday instead?
That works. Yes.
Should work for me.
Nine to 11 on the morning of Thursday, September 4th. And that's in place of August 29th. Okay, nine to 11 on July 25th, which is a Friday. And it's in the morning from nine until 11, Friday morning, July 25th. Then we have Thursday evening, August 21st, from six to eight. Then we have Thursday morning, September 4th, from nine until 11.
Excellent. That would make a terrific motion.
Somebody want to make a.
I'll make a motion that we, those July 25th, nine to 11 AM, August 21st, six to eight PM. Thursday, September 4th, from nine to 11 AM be the dates.
I'll second.
Hey, Collette, we have a motion and we have a second from Tony. We'll vote.
McFall.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Killian. Cap.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to review and authorize the Comprehensive Steering Committee members. Clint.
Madam President, on June 10th, 2025, uh, city manager issued a call via email to elect and, uh, elected and appointed officials to recommend candidates for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. The intent was to identify individuals with knowledge, experience and expertise in a range of focus areas, including land use and planning, education, economic development, workforce development, small business, park and recreation, higher education, civic engagement, public safety and public information access. Based on input from nominations, uh, Alyssa Schaefer, project manager with Southwest Wisconsin Planning, Regional Planning Commission contacted potential appointees and compiled a proposed membership list. Uh, tonight, uh, the most recent list I do have is June 30th list with 13 appointees. We do have, uh, Southwest Regional Planning Commission Director Troy Maggie here, uh, to update on status on that. Again, uh, this is going to be a commission and body put together by Southwest Regional Planning Commission. Um, looking to affirm that we're okay with them making appointments to that commission to guide conversations in comprehensive planning.
Troy has additional information? There were additional people asked? Troy, you need to come to the.
Thank you. Alyssa had been asked to reach out to a few more people and we sent that via email, but that went out after your packet information. So we do have, if you're curious, there were a couple of yellow bars probably in your version. Is that correct? So we've got some slight updates of the availability, um, and willingness to serve.
What is the date of your document?
June 30th is the one that went out in your packet.
One of dated June 30th, 3:30 PM.
Yes, sir.
Is that our, our date?
Yes, he's giving you a new one right now.
Yep, we reached out, um, you know, sometimes there's a game of phone tag with reaching out to folks for these committees. And so that process was in play when we got you the information for today's meeting. Since that went out, we've had some confirmations or rejections, I guess, maybe perhaps both of folks who are engaged. Looks like there's about 13 folks willing to serve. Out of a, a, a pretty good list that I, I believe Alyssa had worked with council on developing.
What do you have on the list?
The, the names highlighted in green on the right. Who are folks who have been contacted and, and agreed to serve.
Those those in green said yes?
Yes, sir.
So you have a list here, but a quite a few people that didn't answer. Is that correct?
Yeah, we wanted a comprehensive list to show you both the kind of people we're reaching out to, we typically work with. And by that, I mean their expertise and walks of life and experience with the city. So we wanted to provide you with a list of, of folks who, uh, either you recommended to us or folks we have recognized as serving the city. From that list, we identify the priorities and get their support and confirmation to join or not.
But we know that, so help me understand, cause there are people who have been contacted who may still be added. I mean, for instance, I know that Brian Allen is going to serve.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess it.
Came directly from the hospital.
At this point of saying this is our bullpen of folks here, and we've got a couple of ones that are hanging out there. Are we confident with the folks that are picked and still may respond back as our team going forward?
Take a look. I mean, there are some that just got sent on July 2nd, some that just got followed up on.
I think the question for you all.
Fifteen to seventeen, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I wouldn't go beyond that. It'll be get a bit unwieldy. Yeah, right. The, the trick is to balance the diversity of input that you all would like to see. And it's really your decision. You know, we do this for a living. We kind of know the type of people who offer good input, but it comes, it's your process. So we need to make sure you're comfortable. Yes, sir. I believe there's 14 highlighted in green there. Yep.
Okay.
That's what I was saying. Yeah. And I, I have a question because are we asked to approve the bullpen? Is that what we're doing that? Because one of the responses when, when we had discussion was to have someone representing the seniors of the community and the individual that, whose name is on there has not responded yet. One of the individuals responded that they couldn't. Another one is still pending. And like I said, we wanted representative from the, uh, healthcare community. And I know that Brian, uh, is supposed to do that and and then, uh, yeah, so what is?
We're, we're moving ahead. We have the steering committee meeting set. From our end and from, I should say the state law that governs comprehensive plans, there is no hard and fast number uh, or timing. What matters is the plan commission and we have that built into the process already. That's kind of the legal mechanism through which you get input. We know that there's a lot of folks who don't go to plan commission meetings, hence the steering committee to give us those walks of life. We are perfectly comfortable with the dates we have on the steering committee moving forward. And if folks can join or you want to make a motion to be as specific as you want. We're happy with that and to bow ahead.
The other part of this, well, to make sure I understand it is all these folks might not be able to make it on any given date. And likewise, if that doesn't mean that somebody potentially can't come and participate in a meeting. Because the formal list is this is things that you're trying your best to capture to get those opinions and those experiences, not necessarily names that are going to be crescent with a, a responsibility and a, a title. Is that?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. And the steering committee, I think there's three meetings. I'm sorry, or I know Abby just got a slew of emails, maybe four, four or five meetings of the steering committee. Yeah, yep. And so, yeah, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna plug in when and how they can. They don't make a vote to authorize or recommend you approve the plan. That, that will come through your plan commission, which I believe we should have plan commission members on here already. So it's, it's not the formal body that recommends the adoption. It's the mechanism we've started creating. It is another level. But it just gives better input. And so, yes, sir. As the administrator said, folks can show up or not and give input when they can. We'd like them to be there at all of them. That'd be wonderful.
There's still community citizen engagement.
Yep.
And there's still plan commission. And in between those two spectrums, you're trying to arrive at collective groups with meetings on specific interest and expertise that can kind of help, uh, give a little bit more in-depth look at some, some key facets, facets. So again, there's no, I mean.
So are you telling me that this list is not exclusive or it is exclusive? If we, if we say these are 13, is that it?
That's kind of the guidance that we've been getting from, uh, from the council on wanting to have exclusive, uh, uh, to, to try to say this is going to be the team and we wanted to have a, a swing at authorizing a list of people. But it, how the process started was looking for advice on people that we should be reaching out to, to have those conversations. The added element of wanting to have a say in authorizing a list has come from, uh, from this, this body. So we're trying to, again, it's the, not necessarily perhaps the, the people and the names, but capturing those expertise in those.
So I think Kathy's question was tonight, there are 13 or 14 green bars. And if somebody calls tomorrow and says, just got, I just got home from vacation, just saw this message, yes, I want to serve. Does that person get a green bar then?
I think we're okay with that. These are folks that you're recommending that you'd like to have on your list, right? That all these names came from
Right, from.
These folks here.
We're not going to turn somebody away at the door. Absolutely. Yeah. So if somebody doesn't get it or gets it late, um, or let's be honest, somebody comes up who's a great asset and we overlook them or we weren't aware of them. Yeah, we can, we can be flexible.
I, I think the balance is kind of like you said earlier, Troy, it's that how in-depth can you get with a group before that group gets kind of too big, that managing that conversation is, would be the a concern from, uh, planning commission. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I mean, there is, you know, how you want to, again, the, the, the kind of the guidance was we got is that, um, was to have an authorization type of a vote. But we don't have to do that. We can say, I think we're, we're in the right direction of having, uh, groups together and expertise together and uh, go forth and let's get it started. Or if we want to be adamant on having a by list name and having those components in place, we can do that. But the caution is, is that we are trying to hit timetables uh, to make sure that we, we get things in lined up by next spring where we have, uh, deadlines in place.
Okay, so folks, what's your pleasure?
I would like them. Yeah, I would like to. I don't know whether I need to make a motion or not, but I would like to see the 13 that have been so designated be on the committee. And then if we have somebody that is um, questionable, that hasn't responded back yet. That we allow them to be on the committee as well. That's, I just don't, I don't want to exclude anybody. But I, I want to, as Troy said, keep, keep it to a reasonable number. So. Right.
So I don't think we need to have a motion. Do we, I mean, do people want to have a motion?
You have a consensus that we're moving in the right direction and we're confident we're going to get the feedback. A, a motion would be magic, magic eight ball in the future that we're not happy with.
I do want to hear about the people that says followed up with, followed up with, followed up with. I do want.
Can I, can I, Alyssa, can I update that? You know, we, we're usually good for maybe an email and a phone call, maybe two phone calls. And if they're not returning, we're, you know, we walk away, leave the poor buggers alone. But we can, if we don't hear back, we can let you know or, or otherwise I'll have Alyssa follow up.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then let's move on to the information portion. I think that was the last action item that isn't really an action item. Let's move on to, if I can find my agenda again, there we go. To the information portion of our agenda.
Land price.
No, city manager.
Budget.
Budget guidance.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the Flatville city manager is tasked with an oversight of the preparation of the city budget. As part of the oversight, the city manager releases an annual budget guidance document to directors that helps convey financial tenants, uh, conditions, assessments, parameters and priorities. As indicated in the 2020, 20, 2025 budget timeline, the city manager intends to release this document to directors in the second week of July, which is this week. Hoping to still get it all put together, but we certainly encountered a lot in the last few days. Uh, this document sets the tone and direction for a budgeting process and the city manager is looking and engaging in conversations with you folks on key budgetary elements. The draft portions that I'd like to talk about today include, uh, when this document does get out, the first section is anticipated changes for 2026. So in the blended science and art of putting together budget and budget guidance, some of the numbers that we're taking a look at is estimated inflation costs for going into operations for next year. Right now, kind of crafting that at about a 2% increase for operational costs, uh, based on Federal Reserve estimates and CBO types of, uh, uh, estimates. Wage increases, still looking heavily at Wisconsin, uh, employee commission. Uh, and what they kind of establish for base bargaining types of numbers, which they get as a, as a projection through Department of Revenues. Anticipating that to look at about a 2.5 for general employees. Again, this is on the front end. We don't know for sure if it's, these are promises that are going to arrive at a budget, but just to kind of get there. Um, keeping in mind that our collective bargaining agreement is at a 3% going into next year. And health insurance, trying to target if possible to try to get at a 6% increase in city expense or less, some of the estimated healthcare costs in general ranges from 4.3% to 6.7%. Trying to, based on our experiences though, in early 2025, if we can arrive at a 6%, that would be great. And some of those numbers equate out to the top for inflations. If you're looking at general fund and broskis, again, an estimate is about $62,000. You start talking about wages. You're at 136, 800 potentially for general, uh, plus collective, uh, bargaining or, or law enforcement's of another 47, 800. Start talking health insurance creases, you're at 73,000. So the whole point of that is if we're going to do everything next year, status quo, kind of like how we're doing today. Those are kind of some numbers that we're going to have to figure out where additional revenues are going to come from. Um, some of the ballpark numbers that we're looking at of increases is shared revenue. I think we have early indications that we're looking at about a 2.3% increase, $73,000. And then of course, we know that, uh, TID 5 is coming online now. TID 5, I shouldn't say, TID 5 is closing and that added value and property value now is coming into, it's outside of TID now and hitting our levies. That doesn't of course mean an automatic increase in levy. It's added property value and capacity that you can raise levy and potentially maintain the same type or, or lower type of a, a mill rate for a city portion. But there's many variables that go into that, including some, uh, recent actions through board of reviews with other property values and such, but dancing on that, it looks like our, our numbers with our increased expenditures seem reasonable to start a budget process. Uh, again, as we move through it, if we have different things that come up that we are changing balance. But the last thing that we want to do is send out budget guidance of, hey, we, you know, go out there and, and without really kind of planning on these elements, uh, to be able to kind of give directors again a goal. Uh, the second element is reports and acknowledgements that I'm drafting, and that is going to be kind of just that narrative on the base, uh, reflecting on our annual reports, uh, that we have all, uh, viewed now as well as, uh, some points, of course, that came up door during the recent maintenance and conditions tours that we took to try to say these things are recognized. If and when and how and solutions, you know, please keep these in mind. Doesn't mean. Doesn't mean that we're going to be able to address all them, but try to address these things underneath financial guidance of. Potentially two and a half percents, three percents types of expenditure increases. Um with that then, too, uh and this will go out, I think tomorrow is the plan following discussion tonight and. Directors meeting tomorrow will be CIP guidance. That usually goes out a week or two before operational documents. And I'd like to talk you through that tonight. That is the document that is on your desk. And this is a carve out of what is going to be section five of the letter. Um so with CIP guidance, uh the first paragraph there, for the most part. Is a repeat of last year with a sentence in the middle added. We will continue with the C I twenty twenty six CIP process. Pro progress is should be process. It's draft. It's working draft. As managed by Director Maurer, the process will include uh previously identified shelved and shovel ready projects as incorporated in the twenty twenty five CIP process. So remember, that's. Where we are taking projects out of the five year plan and putting them on a shelf. So that they don't fall, say, in year five and then impact our financial forecasting because we have a huge swell of things that we're kind of uh pushing into year five. If directors have shelved projects, they strongly recommend for consideration, please include a narrative justifying their priority relative to other departmental CIP requests in twenty twenty six. So. If we're going to take those off the shelf, uh they should be a value of uh to the extent of, well, how do they fit with uh new requests uh that have come up? Justification may include strategic priority or the identi- uh identification of a new funding source. Project status design designations approved plan shelved shovel ready should continue to be used. To strengthen your long term or financial long term forecast. And that's kind of an indicator on those many sheets kind of shame saying how. Uh how big of a priority it is. Uh B, directors will incorporate a reasonable contingency into their CIP project estimates to account for trends in materials and labor increases. Please provide a summary of contingency in the CIP submittals. Uh we want to balance the risk of understanding costs with a restricted restrictions on over committing funds. If we can gauge how much contingent contingency each project is factoring in, we may again be able to pool these estimates to absorb risk. Across the entire year's plan. So that's almost kind of making a small little insurance nest on all of our our projects. Uh C, please forecast increased operational expenses for new CIP projects as appropriate. If impacts extend beyond twenty twenty six, please provide supporting narrative. So if we get a new piece of equipment that requires maintenance and such, we want to be able to identify that. Starting with D now, these are some new ones here. Uh a preliminary maintenance report is under development. And departmental conditions and maintenance tours have been conducted. It is anticipated that many issues identified through this process will emerge as CIP requests. Uh E, the Director of Administration is requested to incorporate a CIP item reflecting twenty twenty five hail damage. This should account for possible funding gap created by insurance limitations such as depreciation deductibles or limits. Uh we will be uh we will. Uh this will be for repair projects that may be delayed until twenty twenty six to ensure funding solutions as needed. Uh F, the Director of Administration will work with the city manager and department directors to evaluate and prepare an enterprise fleet buyout plan for consideration. To return to ownership of our current leased fleet. This initiative is intended to be a multi-year solution to help space fleet life. Now asterix next to this one is we're going to put together hopefully a buyout plan financially of what that would look like to do. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have funds and priority and political will to try to do that, but without knowing the numbers that go with it, it would be hard to determine if it's a. Uh a priority or not. G, the Director of Administration is requested to consider emergency repairs to Pine Street completed in twenty twenty five as a cost offset. Partial reduction of work originally planned for twenty twenty six utility is street recondu- reconstruction program. So this is. Taking in consideration the actions on what we're doing with Pine Street and having that as a variable of do we need to reduce going forward into twenty twenty six? Um certainly, we understand that it's a conversation that is uh based on the background of knowing we have deferred maintenance there. Um and if there's capacities to build it in more, we can we'll cross that bridge. H, uh the Public Works Director is requested to evaluate the feasibility of increasing funding. For the city's thin overlay payment program by means of a potential increase in the local wheel tax. This will not be a very popular type of a thing amongst folks, um but we think it merits at least investigating so that we can know it's an option in the lever. I, Public Works Director is also requested to provide an estimate and feasibility analysis on increasing the city's sidewalk maintenance budget. This should include consideration of a shared cost model with residents for sidewalk replacement, additional conversation on special assessments to help curb. And uh deferred street maintenance will also likely be discussed through this year's planning cycle. So this is kind of, again, I don't know if we're going to reach it, making recommendations on this and having those discussions on that, but this kind of. Uh begins to look back into a special special assessments, which we haven't done in twenty. Twenty plus years. But again, to know if that's a lever and an option as we uh continue having our conversations. Uh J, the Parks, Forestry and Recreation Director and Museum Director are asked to assess and provide recommendations on implementation of a non-resident maintenance fee as a potential modifier to service and attendance fees. This. Uh proposal originated from a Parks, Forestry, Recreation Committee and is intended to generate additional revenue for patrons. That may not be supporting our facilities through property taxes. If adopted, these revenues would be directed into non-lapsing equity accounts. Dedicated to future CIP needs for their correlating services. Um and this we'll talk about more as we go through the process. The K, and this is the last one, the Public Works Director is directed to prepare CIP submission for the East Main Street project with three. And a half options. Uh option one, full covert reconstruction, including adjacent building acquisition and demolition. Option one, a full covert reconstruction to include seismic monitoring and mitigation in the design specifications. This option assumes normal construction vibrations and the possible need for acquisition and demolition. Option two, uh termination of the project and return uh return to Wisconsin DOT funds and settlement with contractors. And option three. Process for resurfacing and including seismic monitoring and mitigation in the design specifications. This option assumes normal construction vibrations. And defers covert reconstruction to a future CIP cycle if failure conditions uh if failure conditions later materialize. So this kind of gets us rolling out of the gate. Uh there's going to be a lot of good ideas, I'm sure, that are going to originate from our directors. As we try to evaluate where things fit, uh but this is kind of seen again from a top down on. Uh please try to incorporate this into the plan, Madam President.
Okay, questions?
Question. Under H. I remember. Time when. They did not give us a thousand dollars as far as money toward the city. Okay, we added on. We did. We did that once, and the problem is the state has not given us enough money, period. And we're getting shafted. Not worth their. Whatever you want to call them, they're not worth it.
Hey, any questions that others might have on this process? Comments, questions?
I like I like the concept.
Yeah.
It's. Very thorough.
Okay, then let's move on to the next information item on the agenda, the proposed amendment to the industry park land price formula. Uh Abby and Joe.
Um yeah, so the this is a recommendation coming from Pedic board, so I'll let Abby fill in the details, but. It's an amendment to the uh industry park land price formula, which is a formula we use to determine the sale price of property in the industry park. It's based on the. Value of the improvements made to the property and the number and type of jobs that are created. So. The last one was done in two thousand sixteen. It's a little out of date. So the Pedic board has made some recommendations. I'll let Abby fill in the details.
So the pre uh you should have this in your packet. The previous um cost per acre was sixty seven five. Uh that was established in twenty sixteen, if I am not mistaken. Uh it's twenty twenty five. We construction costs have gone up astronomically. Uh and we have realized that uh the types of projects that we typically see and want in our industrial park are uh. Coming in uh improvement values in the mil- way in the millions. Uh so for the examples. Um that we ran some scenarios at Pedic, we landed at a acreage price of one seventy five per acre. Uh that's based off of our typical land sale is around five acres. And that would be like a seven million dollar project on that to get the land price formula down to a dollar per acre still. Uh we do want to keep that price. At a higher range. I mean, some of you might think that's just astronomical. Land is a limited resource. We only have so much of it. So based on the type of projects that we want to attract. We aren't necessarily looking for um smaller projects in the industrial park when we have invested so much money in the water, the sewer. Herb gutter, roads, uh et cetera. Um we would like projects that create jobs.
Hey, the do you want to walk us through your proposal then?
Uh so the proposal is uh that the land price is set at a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars per acre. Uh the projects over one million dollars. I'm sorry, I don't have this in front of me. I didn't grab back it uh is. The projects over one million get five thousand dollars per, is it five thousand dollars per ten?
Price is reduced by five thousand per ten.
Ten thousand dollars of improvement.
Over a million.
Over a million. Um for those projects that are under a million, we're looking at uh probably a base of ten thousand dollars per a hundred thousand. Of improvement as the incentive, just so you guys have an idea. But those projects that are under a million on those infill lots, on those smaller than acre lots, really, we're going to be looking at a case by case basis. Um but the base is probably going to be around ten thousand per hundred thousand of improvement. We also simplified the jobs portion of it. Uh we used to have four tiers of jobs. We've um just uh kind of, that's a paperwork nightmare. Um to get these companies to prove, you know, that they're paying and maintaining that pay scale. Uh we just uh changed it to um. The jobs over twenty dollars per hour would then get the incentive.
Excluding benefits.
Excluding benefits. Yep, the base pay has to be twenty dollars per hour. It cannot include. Uh benefits.
Questions?
I think it's reasonable that you've. Come to the conclusion that you don't need as many tier units. I think this is going in the right direction. I agree with it, what you proposed, at least I do. So. Well, I. I guess I could make a motion that we.
So what I would suggest, uh Abby, do you have a phone number that you can give?
Yep, uh if everybody's ready. It's available on the Pedic website in case you do not uh get this copied down, but it is six oh eight. Four eight two. One seven four seven.
Okay, so you have the information in your packet. If you have specific questions, I suggest you give Abby a call. And uh have her, sometimes it's hard to uh understand this credit thing, improvement incentive. Smaller projects, whatever.
And I can run a variety of scenarios for you as well at any of the current lot sizes that are available. For instance, we can plug in any sort of numbers. And just so you are aware, this is comparable to other industrial parks in Wisconsin. We did do. Uh kind of heat map of ones of in communities of similar or slightly larger size.
Clint, would you please include Abby's phone number in your uh weekly? Update.
Yep.
So that people have that. But again, six oh eight four eight two one seven four seven. And I'm sure that Abby would be more than willing to meet you, uh speak with you. Show you a an acre lot or a two acre.
I can take you out there and show you what we're kind of dealing with.
I have a question. Do I look over here at uh approved three, page sixteen? So it says, um for example. Less four thousand for each level for job, thirty dollars per hour, including cost of benefits. Within twenty four months of data closing. Then you go over to the other side. As job incentive, price is reduced by two thousand for all jobs, ready to pay worth twenty. Twenty dollars per hour excluding benefits. Now. That job incentive. Do I look at that and say, well, that's better? Over on the left side. See on the right side.
I don't know if you would say that it's necessarily better or worse. Uh it is definitely simpler. For the businesses and simpler on our end of things to track that. Uh and it helps us to incentivize more jobs. And as well as what the jobs that we are seeing that are coming into the area are about twenty percent professional. Eighty percent skilled labor. Uh so it would provide an incentive to more jo- more of the jobs that they have. That we're seeing at their staff, at the staffing levels that we see in the industrial park at this time. It's allowing them to get an incentive for almost every job they create.
I don't know. I read in the paper that. Job wise. There are not enough jobs being created. And get get job.
Right, so. So hopefully with this land price formula, we can attract businesses that do have. Jobs that come with them, and we would be incentivizing almost every job they create then. So that will help in incentivize them to bring those jobs into Platteville. Uh I've talked to multiple um developers this summer. All of them are looking at creating sixty plus jobs if if we land any of those projects. Uh so we they would get an incentive then for every single job that they create over twenty dollars per hour. So we're trying to attract them.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions of Abby? Okay, again, uh her phone number, six oh eight four eight two one seven four seven. You can give her a call. She would be more than happy to meet with you. Um show you, uh run scenarios of how that works. And uh then it would be on and Clint will include the phone number in his weekly update and um. And then we'll uh talk about, we'll put it on for action next time. Okay.
My comment is. I read the Wisconsin State now. Every day. See, people, I know people that. Were unable to get. Money to. Start their business from the previous year. Going as far as in the country here with this setup with. Have here in the in the. And the states is that uh it's not conducive. To. People to get to get money. So they have to go to other sources to get money. It's it's not a it's it's not a handout. It it they have to ask.
Right, financing, yeah, financing is a huge issue for small businesses um and getting those, as well as purchasing a business that's already in existence. Unfortunately, we can't help with that part of it and the financing, but we work very closely with local banks. We do have um a revolving loan fund. In our region, and the state has discussed bringing back some sort of small business grant program. So there are programs that we're hoping that can be utilized by those wishing to start small businesses and. We don't handle the financing, but I can definitely point them in the right direction.
No, that, yeah, for the least people will be able to.
Right.
Lots can, so.
There's many, 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 many.
Many, many, many. Okay, so we have the land price formula for the, uh.
Next meeting agenda.
Industry park. Uh, again, if you have questions, uh, let Abby know. Um, and we'll move on to the last item in our information agenda, which is the annual video reports review. We had three this time, administration, community development, and the city manager.
Thank you, Madam President. You teed it up terrifically, so I think, um, we kind of know the routine on this one. I think I'm going to move right into a few questions that I received from the, so the first one is in context. And, um, you'd be very kind of thoughtful on this one, and I want to say that it's, it's not intended to offend anybody, but it is prickly and it is. Open meeting type of a subject here, but in context of us having both. Paid election workers and volunteer election workers. Is there opportunities, willingness to try to transition to see if we could have all types of volunteers as a potential?
Yeah.
Uh, expense reduction? And what, how would that, how would that, what would be the concerns with that action?
Thank you. Well, I did discuss that question with, uh, with Collette, um, who runs the elections here in the city. Uh, I think it's important to note that the election worker application form, um, does include the question. Do you want to be paid? So in other words, every, every worker does, um, make a decision in how they answer that question, yes or no. Uh, and so, uh, they're aware that they don't have to be paid. They can volunteer. Um, but we, I also think it'd be true to say that there are workers who actually appreciate. Um, the, the compensation and we don't want to discourage anybody from, uh, working. We, we need all the workers we can get, so, um, but we feel we do have, we do have that covered through that question on the application form. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, second question is in context of performance-based compensation, as you've mentioned in your presentation. Do you know of other municipalities that do this? And if so, uh, what of, uh, who evaluates the employees?
Sure. So, um, I did a little bit of research on this and. I'm just seeing if I can, uh, find that document now. Of course, now I'm looking for it. I won't be able to find it. Um, but there, there were, there are a lot of, uh. Municipalities in the state of Wisconsin that have, uh, a program or a compensation plan. That includes merit-based pay. Um, some of those that, that are located, um, that are of a similar. Kind of size to the city of Platteville are River Falls, Manona, Fort Atkinson, Stodden, uh, Baraboo, Portage, Reedsburg, Monroe. Uh, now I did not reach out to each of those municipalities and, and confirm exactly how they are implementing. That, uh, compensation plan, but, but just to say that AI helped me determine that within their. Handbooks within their compensation, um, plans, they did mention a performance-based or merit-based compensation. So, um, so I don't think it's a, um, an out of the box solution necessarily. I think it is something that, um, many municipalities are pursuing, whether or not they're actually currently implementing. I'm not sure. But, uh, but I do, I, I would, I would just elaborate on the idea, uh, by saying that. We value all of our staff and, um, and I think, you know, generally speaking, all of our staff work very hard. But there are times when staff go above and beyond, when they have a particularly challenging season or year. Uh, and, and it would be great to be able to encourage them that we see that, we recognize it. Um, and, you know, here's a bonus to say thank you for the extra work that you put in. That was, you know, outside of what would be normally expected for that position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I've got, uh, maybe kind of put some context. I have a couple more follow-up questions if I can, Madam President. So, uh, Nicola, uh, Joe, you know, we, we did a bit of a tour across the city and kind of talking in conditions and such. And more, some of that went past, um, maintenance on buildings and CIP things. We also kind of talked on, on operations as well. So I wanted to throw a couple of questions, uh, your way, just to make sure that you had a chance to, to kind of have the same experience. And be able to kind of talk about what's going on with operations in your department. So Nicola, my question to you is in regards to, uh, in the last few years, we've embraced having a, a CIP management. Type of a plan. Uh, with that CIP plan, we've also now, uh, went from borrowing once a year to. Three, sometimes four times in a year with both general obligation notes and different revenue bondings and those types of things. And then too, we have, uh, growing desires of making sure money that we have in hand is optimally invested. Uh, to making sure that we have interest grow off of those. So can I kind of maybe have you just very briefly talk on those three things, how they've impacted, uh, the evolution in the workflow of the office? And where there are challenges and opportunities in that.
Sure. Um, so thinking about this, uh, I would say if we look at the five years since the pandemic. Uh, we have a significant increase in our CIP projects. And this is partly due to additional funding sources. Some of these are opera funds. We did a lot of projects through opera funds. Um, the fire station appropriation, obviously, that's a great big one on the horizon. Tap grant, DOT grants for street reconstruction, the SIFs program, traffic signals grant. Streambank, uh, grant, uh, trail property acquisition grants, the CLAB properties purchased with Roundtree Hall proceeds. That was an unexpected and un- unusual revenue, uh, revenue flow. Um, the, the grant for the inclusive playground. Um, then also fundraising for various projects around the city, such as the Boski Center, the Pickleball Courts. Those were before the pandemic, um, library improvements on an annual basis. And all of these things are exciting additions to the city and make the city, um, you know, hum with all kinds of opportunities. For recreation and for, uh, enjoyment of the city. Um, they also require an investment of staff time in several departments. And this is a bit of a repeated refrain now that you hear, um, not just from admin, but from parks and work and streets and so on. Uh, but as far as admin is concerned, it does impact, uh, tracking and, uh, and requesting. Grant reimbursements, um, submitting for reimbursements, reconciling those accounts, those are, you know, are. Extra revenue accounts and extra expense accounts. And then also following up with, uh, the, the source of the revenue, so it might be pledged. Maybe it's a grant from the state or from a local, um, fundraising. But, but there's a lot of legwork that goes into making sure that those funds actually come in the door, um, at some point. And that they match what we were anticipating. Um, so, so that's just to, to talk a little bit about the increase in, in CIP work that we've seen over the last five years.
Uh, Joe, I've got one for you. Um, so it's been known that our, our. Building assessor Rick is approaching the, he, he's, he's further to the, closer to the end of his career than the beginning of his career. And, uh, we're certainly not looking to push anybody out, but he's given indications that he might be sunsetting and moving off to. Do a job career and seeking other opportunities and such that's going on. I guess with that, I've kind of, we've talked about and I've kind of given you guidance and starting to explore if that is a position that can be contracted out. Versus having an in-house, uh, building assess or building, uh, inspector, thank you. Um, can I have you maybe talk on the pros and cons of that? But then please put that in context to what traditionally might be an average year versus what might be a hailstorm year.
Yeah, that's interesting you, you're to be asking that question, but, uh, the, the, one of the main advantage is that I'm considering looking at that option. Uh, because we have one billion inspector right now. Um, and it has not really been a big issue, uh, just because Rick prefers to work. And when he does take off work, he tends to not go anywhere too far away. So, um, it, it has not been an issue of him being available to do the required inspections. If we get somebody in who's young, got a family, goes on vacation for a couple of weeks and they're not around, we will not have anybody. Available to do those required inspections. So the advantage of having a, a contract position, there's a lot of firms out there that do that type of work. Um, they've got multiple inspectors in multiple communities and they tend to have somebody else in their, their office, in their employment. That provides backup when one of the other inspectors is not available. So that would not be an issue that we would have to worry about. They would take care of that if they've got their inspector that's not going to be available. If we hire another inspector, I think we would have to at least look at having somebody else like that. Um, contracted to provide backup services if they're not the full-time inspector. If we have a employee doing it, at least have somebody as a backup. So to me, it might be more cost-effective just to look at having that contract position. But, uh, we will get into that a little more detail. Um, one thing in, in previous conversations with some of those firms, they, they, there, there's a couple of different ways we can pay them. Um, a lot of them work off of the, the permits. They, they basically get paid by the fees that are collected. So they want to have input into what our fee structure is so that to make sure they're getting enough money to cover their, their time invested. So that would be something we would have to look at. There are some compromise or combined models. They get a base fee. So you're so much plus in, in the fees on top of it, so that it, they're guaranteed a certain amount. But they also get more if there's higher, uh, inspection requirements. So there's a couple of different ways we can go about it and that's something we would have to dig into in more detail.
Thank you. Madam President, I have no other questions.
Anybody on the council think questions? Those, uh, videos are available online for your reviewing. Pleasure, in other words, doing it again and again.
And as a technique, um, I think, um, Bob has pointed out too, if you listen to them at one point five speed, you can still gather what it is. It sounds a little chipmunky, but you can get through it fifty percent faster.
That you, you might have to teach some of us then.
My daughter taught me.
Well, there you go.
Cause I'd watched three at normal speed and I was thinking this is taking forever and she said, you can speed it up dad. And that still sounds pretty good.
Still get the, and I asked for the actual PowerPoints so that I could, uh, look at them and see them and go back to them. Um, when I needed it. So anyway, okay, uh, there is nothing else on our agenda except one thing I want to mention. And that is yesterday, uh, in the midst of all of these tours that we took. We also welcomed our Senator Mark Klein, uh, to the city hall. Um, and, uh, talked about, uh, the state budget as it relates to. Uh, southwest Wisconsin and Platteville. And we're exceedingly happy that the budget includes us two million dollar appropriation that goes to southwest health. To build a childcare center, which will serve, I think, a hundred forty, a hundred forty, um. Children. Uh, so that was a big thing that we talked about. Another big thing we talked about, Ken, and I wish you were there. Is this year, for the first year in, I can't even remember how many years. We're getting an increase in our payment for municipal services. You remember that? Payment for municipal services.
UW Platteville?
This is because we have a state facility in our city. It, it could have, I mean, we have UW Platteville, but La Crosse would have not only UW La Crosse, but the State Department of Transportation and, uh. So it's for, it's for communities that have state-operated enterprises within their community. And we got what? A thirteen percent increase? Is that right?
UW.
No, no, UW, that comes from, no.
Well, that's the, the way to set up was.
No, that's not the way it happens now. This all comes through tax revenue, right? Um, and, uh, we are very.
Didn't think that he was much of a person as far as giving a good contribution.
He did a bit, I mean, they did a pretty nice thing of that. There's some additional road funds that.
I'm very disappointed in him.
There's some additional money that's coming for roads. Um, there's additional money coming for schools and, uh, for the, uh, special ed reimbursement. Um, so all in all, and we preserved the, uh, additional shared revenue. That was authorized last, for the last budget cycle, reauthorized for this budget cycle. So, uh, all in all, um, it was better than maybe we hoped.
Better than expected.
Better than perhaps we hope. So we said thank you and, uh, um, we'll probably ask again.
Was he the fellow that was lying on the? Here, up at the state and looking up in the sky and talking about people?
I have no clue. I need one more motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Great, Collette will vote.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Halian? Cap?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Motion carries.